Roll call for planning and zoning Chairperson Griffiths?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Witherford? Commissioner Rankin?
Here.
Commissioner Borden?
Here.
Commissioner Laney? Commissioner Earp? Roll call for town council Councilmember Leva?
Here.
Councilmember Goyer?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Present.
Vice Mayor Hunt?
Here.
Mayor Palkuta?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thanks ma'am. First and only item up Chapter 13 zoning code revision update. Mr. Ruby, you are not Ms. Kennedy.
Good thing for you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Commission. The item before you today is the Chapter 13 rewrite update. This is a process that we've been endeavoring to complete for the last, oh, probably year and a half or so. If you recall, we had a meeting back in April where we discussed some of the items that were relevant to the code update. Tonight, we have a few more things, quite a few more things that our land use attorney Frank Cassidy is going to cover with you. And there's a couple of items of interest in the major rewrite table that you would have received that shows how things are being kind of redone. Mr. Cassidy will get into those for you. And with that, I will keep it brief, introduce our land use attorney Frank Cassidy and he'll move ahead.
Welcome, Mr. Cassidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Frank Cassidy. Without further ado, the materials that you have for today are voluminous. I apologize for that, but basically we have the clean version, if you will, of the revised code. We have a red line to the existing version. It was a computer generated red line, so it's pretty messy when you get to certain places. But it kind of can help you see what changed a little bit. And then we have a derivation table showing if you knew very well where things were in the original code, the current code, and you said, where did that go? You look at the derivation table, it shows you where it went. And then there's also a version of the major changes table, which we'll update as we make more changes and bring it to the finish line. So basically, this slide here is just going to give you a quick overview of what I'm going to cover today. I'm going to talk about the goals, some of the key changes, some of the other changes that are being discussed, some of the changes that we had discussed previously that we've now not put in the code, and then give you an opportunity for comments and feedback. So what were the goals and what are the goals? Mainly, it's readability, it's simplifying it, making it so that when you read the code, you can find things. We've put, instead of having many pages of lists of uses, you'll find those in tables now. Instead of having, for example, the marijuana provisions strewn throughout the code, they're all in one section, and so the various elements are put together. Procedures, certain procedures are simplified. We've tried to identify any conflicts in the code provisions and correct them out, and then try to pursue some attainable housing goals since you had that attainable housing process by looking at things that maybe you could tweak in your code to allow a little bit more housing to the extent possible. So some of the key changes, and again, there's a table of these and they're actually, you know, of course, what's key change and what's a major change is a matter of subject, you know, a little bit subjective. But in any event, so these are some of the key ones. We're proposing that planned area development zoning not just be an overlay zone, but be allowed to be a primary zone, that it be, right now, it says, the code says, if you've got a project more than 40 acres, you must do a PAD. We're suggesting that you basically allow a PAD on properties even as small as four, five acres, but that you don't mandate that there be a PAD if it's a larger project. Honestly, a PAD is a separate zoning code for a particular piece of property. So if you have a bunch of different PADs, it becomes an administrative hassle. So I really don't recommend those. The PAD approach in the revised code follows more of a standard rezoning process. It comes to the council, to the commission and council through the normal rezoning process. Hopefully, the document that comes out of that is clear enough and concise enough that number one, that the council is actually comfortable enough to approve those entitlements in that way, but also so that the staff, as they move forward, can simply look to that PAD in determining whether the final land uses are, meet the requirements of the PAD process. As you know, a PAD is a developer-written zoning ordinance for a piece, a specific piece of property. So it's very, it's a specific zoning code for a specific parcel of property. Many, in many ways, developers have to use a PAD in Prescott Valley these days if they want to build on pretty much standard-sized homes. Because standard-sized homes in all the big cities are going to be certainly on lots no bigger than 7,000 square feet and probably even smaller than that. Your code, in your code, your standard zones start at 10,000 square feet. So they can't really rezone to a standard zone in Prescott Valley and sell their normal products. So they pretty much all do the PADs. We're also looking to future revisions that aren't in your August the 2nd draft, which was in your materials. One of those is to make it clear that already approved PADs, PADs that were approved in the past, if they have procedures in them about how they're going to be amended, we would suggest that you just leave it with their procedures so that you don't confuse things too much. Go ahead and allow the procedures adopted in the PAD itself to apply to future amendments for those. Also, we've gotten a little bit, I believe there's some confusion about this preliminary development plan terminology. I recommend, and I'm going to push this in the future, elements of this in, including in the PAD, but also in every normal rezoning process. When you're talking about zoning entitlements, in other words, the thing that a developer gets at the end of the rezoning process, the entitlement that they get, that the plan that they show to get that entitlement is a preliminary development plan. And the reason why you want to use that language is the final development plan language, a final development plan is an engineering document that the engineer looks at. And that's really, that level of detail, I definitely recommend does not come back to you. That document is something that shows, for example, turning radius for the big truck to make sure that it has, you're not going to do those calculations, that's staff. But your final development plan approval as part of the PAD is going to still be called a preliminary development plan because it's, the message is, it's preliminary from the perspective that it simply shows the zoning entitlements. You're still going to leave it to staff, no matter what's done in the zoning process, staff still has to apply the actual engineering rules to the final product, you know, before it's built, the final development. So that terminology is going to be updated. So we've talked about this in April, so I won't spend any more time on it. But obviously, one of the key changes is some of the zoning district names have been changed. We've tried to simplify them, take numbers out of the zoning district names, leave numbers just for density designations and residential zones. Another key change is to stick all the particular uses, special uses that have special rules associated with them, put them all together. So there's an article of the code that deals with particular uses, and these are the subjects in that section. And so, for example, if you're looking for a marijuana regulation, it's going to be in the marijuana uses section, and that's the only place you really have to look, and so on. We've again talked about this ad nauseam, and I've shown you all kinds of backup material to show the derivation of how we got from the lists of uses to the tables of uses. So this is obviously one of the key changes, which I'm not going to talk about in this session unless you ask me a question about it. But that's just for the public and just to make a record that that is certainly one of the key changes, tables instead of text. Another key change that we really haven't spent a lot of time talking about is the procedure now for conditional use permits and special use permits. In your current code, you have something called a use permit. And then the use permit process in your current code actually has two different procedures depending on whether, for example, it's a telecommunications facility, in which case it goes to the commission and the council, or if it's just a normal use permit, in which case it goes to the Board of Adjustment right now, and then if there's an appeal, it goes to the council. What I'm recommending is that a conditional use permit go to, basically, the zoning administrator first. It still gets the same kind of notice. A person asking for a CUP would still, you know, the information about that would be, still be sent to people within 300 feet, the same way as it is now. But by not having to wait for a public meeting, you save some time. Many times, the CUPs are not a big deal. If somebody is upset about the CUP who has standing, that me being, for example, the property owner, if they're denied the CAP, or an immediate neighbor, or even a council member, if they're upset about it, they can appeal that to the council for the final decision. So that's the way it's written in this draft. I've separated out the special use permit process now. A special use permit process is one that goes to the commission for a recommendation and to the council always for a hearing. And we've applied that now to three different things. One is telecom. Another one is utility scale solar. So if you have a solar farm, that's a big deal. A solar farm is a big deal. And so our feeling was it needs to go through pretty much a full process. So the special use permit process is quite similar to a rezoning process, going to the commission for a recommendation and to the council for decision. The third thing is wind turbines. Right now, you don't have any wind turbines, and they're not addressed in the current code. But we felt that, you know, with wind turbines showing up places, if one shows up in town, we think that ought to go through a special use permit process, sort of a harder process. Also, this code, you might have seen, has a section called conditional uses upon annexation or upon the submission of a diminution claim. That kind of conditional use permit comes to council, and that's a special situation where, for example, if you're annexing somebody who's in the county, you know, the county by state law cannot play zoning restrictions on agricultural uses. There's an exemption for, outright exemption for agriculture. So when I was the town attorney of Morana, what sometimes would happen is we'd have a person who says, yeah, I'd love to come into the town of Morana, but when I come into the town of Morana, or in your case, into, you know, the town of Prescott Valley, all of a sudden, my exempt uses in the county are all of a sudden regulated. Well, to get around that, this section would allow the council, upon annexation, to say, look, we'll exempt that use that you were doing in the county, and we'll allow it to continue after annexation. Same thing with a diminution claim. If you get one of those Prop 207 claims, especially after the rewrite of this, somebody might say, well, Cassidy tweaked this use a little bit, and I'm upset about the way it was tweaked. Please give me the old language for this use on my particular property. It allows you to do that without anything more. So that's a simplified process for dealing with those special issues. So there are a few things that we are still kind of discussing. Obviously, a whole bunch of this we're still discussing, but these in particular, we wanted to talk about. As I mentioned, one of the reasons developers do PADs all the time in the town is that you have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. What, and what the version that you have, the August 2nd version, carries that 10,000 square foot minimum lot size forward. But what we're talking about doing is perhaps revising the table for development standards for small lots. So this is a red line showing what we're talking about doing. And what it does is it would allow you for, if you have a density designation of eight, under this revision, you'd actually be able to have an 8,000 square foot lot. You wouldn't have to have a 10,000 square foot lot, and then you're allowed to do 8,000 square feet per dwelling unit, which is a confusing concept anyway. So this would take it all the way down on this table, the draft table that's in front of you on the screen here. This one would take it down all the way to 5,000 square foot lots. So if you had a density designation of five, you could actually have a 5,000 square foot lot. That means if a developer wants to build 5,000 or 6,000 square foot lots, single-family residential lots in your community, they don't have to go to a PAD. They can say, hey, I want RL zoning, RL dash six zoning, because I'll agree to a 6,000 square foot minimum lot size. You can use your standard zoning with this approach. The other thing that this table does is, right now, not only do you have the 10,000 square foot lot size, but the minimum width and length are 100 by 100. If you multiply 100 by 100, you get 10,000 square feet. So if you look at an aerial photograph of town, you'll be surprised at how many square, remarkably square lots you have. So here's, this is GIS of the area. So you might wonder, well, why, why is there so little deviation? I mean, there's a permissible deviation in the code for lots that are, for example, on a cul-de-sacs, that you actually measure that width at the front line of the house. But by and large, they're pretty much square lots. So under this alternate approach, I'm suggesting that you actually allow a little bit of flexibility with the width and length of those lots. And basically, if you multiply 80 width by 80 depth, it comes to 64% of the full lot size. I've used a 64% approach to all of the lot size deviations on this. So it gives a little bit more flexibility. So that's one thing that I was hoping to get some feedback from the council on. The next item is you have this Home of My Own program. And it's really Yavapai County started this program. And this is a program where Yavapai County came up with pre-approved building plans for one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom houses. They came up with this in 2020, and they revised, they've come up with revised versions now for 2024. So there are actually two different versions of one-bedroom home, really four different because you also can do a mirror image, so anyway. And you don't have to, you know, they're pre-approved. It's kind of a nice program, it's sort of a attainable housing, really, kind of program. And Stephanie Robinson on your staff is excited to bring this forward, but there aren't a lot of places to put these houses. And so one of the things that Stephanie had asked was, Frank, can we come up with something that allows for Home of My Own implementation? One of the challenges with this is some of the logical places to put Home of My Own structures, which are stick-built structures, are actually MH-zoned lots. And if you remember, in your code, and if you have the mobile home zoning, manufactured housing zoning, I should say, you must have a manufactured home. You cannot put a stick-built house on a manufactured housing lot under the current code. So that's, that's a hurdle that we have. So those are some of the smaller lots, some of those older mobile home lots are some of the places where it could be logical, perhaps, to place some of these, and yet you can't. The other problem, though, is even the smallest home of the Home of My Own plans hardly fits on one of these lots. And just to give you an idea, again, going back to the, the mayor asked me not to get too far in the weeds. I hope I'm not going to get too far in the weeds. But in any event, if you look at the aerial photography of lots where, you know, you have some of these mobile homes, they're basically 42 feet wide. So right up here, for example, along J Court, these lots here, those are 42 feet wide. So if you take the smallest Home of Your Own lot and you put a garage on it, you choose the garage option, it won't fit on this lot. So that brings us to the question of whether you want to keep the garage thing, which is the next subject. But first, let's just look at the language I have for the Home of My Own program, just so you can see it. It's a very simple section, and it's called affordable redevelopment of existing small residential lots. And it allows an affordable home to be constructed, even in MH zone, can be constructed on any legal or even legal non-conforming lot in the town. And it, by definition, treats one of these, a Home of My Own layouts, as an affordable home. But it also allows a person to prove up that some other home is an affordable home. So that's the language, and obviously, you'll have time to look at this at your leisure. But in any event, so this would be then a way to implement that program. It's not in the August 2nd draft, but it would be a way to actually make that, a Home of My Own program, be able to come forward. So speaking of that situation, of the fact that the garage might not fit on the 42-foot lot, that brings us to the storage requirement, which is sort of under discussion. So your current code says you've got to have a garage. For a single-family residence, you have to either have a garage or 100 square feet of enclosed storage. And then for an apartment, for apartments, each apartment must have 50 square feet of enclosed storage. One possible alternative would be basically to eliminate this requirement. I mean, this isn't Phoenix where you have, you know, 120-day, 20-degree days, and nobody wants to park their car outside. I mean, I suppose there are days hot enough that you wish you didn't park your car outside. But I don't think you have the same level of need for garages in Prescott Valley as you do in other places. And storage these days, honestly, every place you turn has a self-storage facility. So if somebody needs storage, it seems like it's everywhere. So one of the considerations we were asking you for feedback on is whether to perhaps eliminate this garage/storage requirement. All right, so now let's get to the, to the subject of discussed items, items that we've discussed at past meetings, but now we've excluded. So the first one is accessory dwelling units. And we had a meeting on this almost exactly a year ago, on September the 7th last year, where we had actually showed you some proposed language. And based on the feedback that we got, I didn't feel like people were excited about it. And essentially, we were suggesting that the legislature was probably going to do something about this. So essentially, what we did about this was we took kind of a wait-and-see attitude to see what the legislature was going to do, and they did something. So, and what did they do? So what they did is they adopted a rule that said for any municipality larger than 75,000 population, those cities and towns must allow accessory dwelling units. And then it placed requirements on those. In fact, the way it works for those communities, not that I want to bore you with it, but not only must they allow a detached accessory dwelling unit, excuse me, but also not only must they allow a detached accessory dwelling unit, excuse me, but also an attached one. So you essentially get the right in cities larger than 75,000 to have two accessory dwelling units on every single-family residence, one attached, one detached. And then if you have more than an acre and you're willing to limit the, another ADU to being affordable housing, you can have yet another one. So this would allow a one-acre property, a single-family residence on one acre property to just, as a result, the legislation go from one unit to four units. So that's the way the legislation works. But that part doesn't apply to smaller cities. But what does apply to smaller cities is there's a part of the law that says, if you allow ADUs, these are the rules that apply to you. It says you cannot require extra parking for an ADU. So if you're going to allow an ADU, you can't make it have an extra parking space. If you're going to allow an ADU, you can't require it to look like the main house. So there are, you know, appearance requirements, those are not allowed under the state law. People are always concerned about the use of ADUs for short-term rentals, you know, the short-term rental law, vacation rentals. So for example, a couple of cities in the state of Arizona said, you know, what I'm going to, what we're going to do is we're going to require a person to place a covenant on their property saying they'll never use that ADU as a short-term rental, as a condition of getting the ADU permit. Well, the legislature now prohibited that process. You cannot, you cannot require a person to place a covenant on their property as a condition of getting an ADU now. The only limitation, the only thing bone, if you will, that the legislature tossed to cities and towns on this, is it said you can adopt a regulation that says that if there's an ADU on the property and it's used for short-term rental, then either the ADU or the main house must be occupied by the owner of the property. So that, the idea being presumably the owner of the property, living on the property, isn't going to allow something really obnoxious to happen in the short-term rental. I guess that's the thinking of it. But that's the only limited, very limited authority you would now have to try to deal with it as short-term rental. So with all of that, honestly, I, you know, we did exclude it, and I think it should stay excluded, in my opinion. I really believe looking, trying to look into the future, that the legislature probably is going to tinker with this again and might actually force you to do this in the future. But I don't think it would be logical for you to try to, to, to take, take this on. So we're recommending that it stay excluded. So another subject that we discussed ad nauseam previously was something that I called the infill incentive district. So this is something that I was stealing, basically, from the city of Tucson. The city of Tucson, along its rail, you know, the rail line, it now has placed an infill incentive overlay in that area, which allows a very high density of mixed uses. And it's really, it's form-based zoning. So mostly what the city is concerned about is what does it look like? Does it look okay? And if the buildings look okay, you can do pretty much whatever you want in them, with some limitations. I mean, there's like performance standards for noise, you're not going to allow a manufacturer, noisy manufacturer in there or something like that. But by the, by and large, it allowed quite a few uses within designated areas. So I had prepared an infill overlay zone proposal, not placing it on any land, but just saying, let's create what we call a floating zone. So it floats in the zoning code until you put it onto a piece of land. But the, the staff really wasn't very enamored with my proposal. I hate to say, just because I come here doesn't mean they have to like me. But, and they didn't like this. One of the reasons they didn't like it, it really didn't have any affordable housing element to it. It wasn't really an affordable housing thing. It was a mixed-use-in-the-downtown kind of thing. So, and they were concerned about some density impacts and the compatibility with surrounding uses. So that we've removed, and subject to your feedback, we would leave that removed. So we come sort of to the feedback point. So now that we've talked about this, and now that you've looked at 500-plus pages of stuff for a month or so, and hopefully it helped you to sleep some, you know, read a couple of pages of it before you go to bed, that kind of thing. But, so now we come to the point of trying to get, you know, some feedback from you on how you feel about some of these things. So, for example, now on the PAD revisions, whether we continue the line that we've, that we're talking about, or whether we pivot, whether you're okay with having the CUP, conditional use permit, go to the zoning administrator with an appeal to the council, or whether you would want it to go someplace else. I really recommend that if it goes someplace else, if you want it still to go to a body, I really recommend that you don't have it go to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial body. In other words, they act like judges, and they decide things like variances, and they determine interpretations of the zoning code. So they're in a judgment, quasi-judicial sort of role, whereas with a conditional use permit, that's deciding, well, is this use appropriate in this location? If you're going to give it to a body, I would say give it to the commission, because the commission does rezonings. That's, you know, compatibility of a use in a given location is really sort of their forte. So if you still want it to stay with a body, I would say direct us to give it to, to the commission. But we actually recommend that it stay with, as it is in the draft, which is stay with the zoning administrator. One thing I have in the, I'm sorry, in the PowerPoint, but I failed to touch on, one of the items in the use list that we've added to the commercial and industrial use list is that in the commercial zones, you'll see that I've put a C for multifamily housing in the commercial zones. That means you could get a conditional use permit to put multifamily housing. That was sort of a nod to the attainable housing goals that were adopted a couple of years ago. Because right now, in your current code, commercial and industrial pretty much prohibit residential uses. And so this would at least open the door a little bit. So one of the pieces of feedback is, are you okay with that? Another alternative, by the way, instead of doing a CUP would say, be to say, okay, maybe we're okay with opening the door a little bit, but let's make it an SUP that goes to the commission and the council, more of a robust process. So that's, that. Also, again, feedback on the smaller lots, standard zoning option, Home of My Own option, the requirement for storage, ADU, and the infill incentive. So I, that's, that's the end of my prepared remarks. I'm prepared to hear any feedback or answer any questions that any of you might have.
Thank you, sir. I just make a few comments. First being on the Home of My Own, great program, works exceptionally well in the county. And here in Prescott Valley, we can't do exactly what they do in the county, because in the county, it's going to work for someone that owns maybe a piece of property in Paulding, which is flat, and it works for them to be able to build that type of home. I'm sure, as you know, here in Prescott Valley, there's not many infill parcels that are completely flat anymore. So we got to be figuring out a way, and I think utilizing a multifamily or manufactured home area, great idea. So if someone in Unit 5, for example, some of those homes are getting older and older, and maybe cheaper to just tear it out, they already own the land, they might own multiple parcels connected over there. I've seen that a lot of times. So this would be a great option for them to put a simple home in that area. So I think that's awesome. The requirement for storage for apartments, I just, I don't know, is there any, like, in your experience, there's not many places in the state of Arizona that require this, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. I've not, I've not seen a storage requirement. I've seen places that say you have to have a garage, but I've not seen it tied to storage.
I think the answer to this is, as a renter or someone who wants to occupy this structure, if they know they're not going to, or if they know they're going to need storage, it's probably not going to be the one for them. They would probably pick a different unit to occupy. So I think giving a renter the option is the best way to handle that, and requiring it just creates too much of a problem. So I think that's a great modification to it as well. I have some other comments, but I'll let the vice mayor kick it off a little bit.
So, thank you. So on the PAD, the way I understood you is that we've always used it for overlay. As an example, area next to the hospital is CGPAD, right? And you're recommending that PAD would just be the zoning district.
Correct.
So I think that's a good idea. So would we change it or leave it the way it is with some CG-PAD and allow them to do PAD also?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, actually, under the rewrite, you can either have it as an overlay or as the primary zoning district. So for all of those ones that have already been adopted, they would stay as overlays. One of the benefits of having it as an overlay is that the writer of the PAD, the developer who asked for the PAD, can simply say, you know, there are a lot of elements of the underlying zoning that I like, so I'm going to keep the underlying, but I'm going to tweak these elements. And so it makes the writing of the PAD a little bit easier sometimes. But if they want some entirely new product, then they would do it as a primary zone.
Guidelines, yeah, it gives guidelines. And then the CUP by zoning administrator and then appeal to council, I think that's a great idea. We've had, I think, some issues with CUPs going, or use permits going to the Board of Adjustments because they're not elected body, and some of them have been more difficult. We didn't, you didn't really talk about multifamily in commercial zones with the CUP. I don't think that that's a bad idea, but I think that they need to have some aspect of commercial in them, where we're seeing in other areas where they might have commercial on the bottom and apartments on top, so that it's multifamily and commercial both.
I see.
And then you, I lost the list, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you going to it?
Yeah, I was going to go to the place in the, in the thing, but let me bring the list back up. There you go. Sorry.
And then, so I think they should have an emphasis of commercial on it, not just multifamily alone. So then we still get some jobs and some sales tax on those parcels. I agree with the small lot standard zoning option because there's a lot of smaller lots in Prescott Valley, not only in PADs. And so I think that's something we need, plus it'll help with attainable housing. Love the Home of My Own program. I'm not exactly sure if what you're presenting will go into the zoning code.
Yes, it would.
And I agree, the requirement for storage should come out. So we don't require garages, although developers do build garages because they know the people want them. But we do require off-site parking, so they would have an extra long driveway for the cars without a garage, right?
Correct, yes. You still have a parking obligation even without a garage, yes.
Okay. And then ADUs, I think, you know, we have developers that are building 400 square-foot units that are very marketable to teachers and others who may be looking for a unit of their own. I think there should be some allowance for ADUs. Right now, we have, tell me the example that we did in the large lots behind Coles. That was called a?
Guest house. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And it had to be occupied by family.
Correct. And no, could not have a kitchen also.
At this point, we don't allow any ADUs anywhere.
That's correct. But you do allow guest houses. The thing about a guest house is it has to meet the setbacks of the primary building also, which is why mathematically, you have to have a pretty big lot to put a guest house so that it meets those rear and side yard setbacks of the main building.
And I think the real definition of a guest house is for temporary use, not necessarily for a person to come and live in, although we're allowing that in that zone. But I just think we should be more open to ADUs on larger lots, maybe half-acre or 10,000 square feet, because I think there is a market for them, for people to make a little bit extra money maybe on an ADU, to bring a parent in, or like I said, or teachers. And then infill incentive overlay zone, I think this is a good idea too. So it could go on any zoning?
It would be placed in, in areas that you decide would be appropriate for a mixed-use form-based zoning. So like areas near Town Hall here that have not developed for whatever reason, you can place it as an incentive. It's, the way it's designed is you would lay it as an overlay, and then the underlying property owner would be able to opt in by selecting the infill overlay.
Is that something we would do, or they would apply for that, like they apply for a change of zone?
You can do it either way. You can either wait for somebody to apply for it, or you can look forward. For example, as part of your next general plan update process, you could say, here are areas of town where it'd be great to have mixed-use, higher-density zoning, where we have existing infrastructure, whatever, and you would perhaps place it there. And the nice thing about the way this works is even if the underlying property owner doesn't like it, they don't, they wouldn't have a 207 claim because you're simply increasing their options, and it's not mandatory. That's right.
So I have other comments that aren't on this list, so I'll go to those when it's time.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, you have anything to add?
That's a general question.
Vice Chair? Yes, sir, go for it.
Just two or three. If I get too windy, you'll throw something at me.
I'm sure I will. Thank you. First one's fairly minor, but it's a pet peeve of mine based on something that came up at a previous zoning hearing. The public land designation, I believe currently to have that designation, you have to be a government or quasi-government entity. When I read it in the new code, it doesn't seem to be like a private individual could have a PL zoning.
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Evans, Commissioner Evans, it actually doesn't necessarily look to public ownership. It looks to the kinds of activities that occur there. So things that are quasi-public activities, like a hospital, you would see in the PL zone. So that's, that's what the designation is for right now. But you couldn't, as a private person, ask for your house to be put into a PL zone, but...
Sort of use. It doesn't have to be a government entity owning the property if the use is consistent with the code to have a PL zoning.
Correct.
This one's kind of a corollary of the Tenth Amendment question. By way of example, and this isn't a complaint or anything like that, but in situations where, let's say there's a very significant change to the character of a development that was zoned a particular way, went to P and Z, went to council. And in this case, it was a change from a design perspective, really, it was a classical-looking apartment block, and now all of a sudden it's something 180 degrees different. Technically, it is a few units less than the zoning permitted, and it was approved by staff. I think with that reference to council or P and Z, if it was, then I'll stand to be corrected. My question kind of broad-brush, not specific to that, is if we look at the code and the new code, the way it's drafted, if a responsibility, a duty, or whatever, is not specifically allocated to P and Z or council, then by definition, it would fall to staff. Is that correct, or is that not correct?
Staff implements the, and carries out the will of the council, adopted through its policy documents, so yes. But the specific, I'm not sure of this, the particular case you're talking about, but the specific legal doctrine you're talking about is something we in the business call substantial change to, to a zoning. So when you come through the rezoning process and you're approved for a particular zone, under traditional zoning, once you get the rezoning to some designation, you're entitled to do whatever you want that's considered. to do whatever you want that's consistent with that zoning. That's traditional Euclidean zoning.
Statics would have nothing to do with it. If it's consistent in terms of...
If it meets your code...
Use.
It's allowed. That is traditional Euclidean zoning. Now, because most councils don't really like to give somebody that kind of blank check for a rezoning, most folks, most cities and towns, when they approve a rezoning, will try to tie the developer to the product that they were presenting. In other words, the pretty pictures, the preliminary development plan is what I'm going to go with, that was part of their zoning entitlement process. And many places actually say, conformance to the preliminary development plan as presented to council and approved at time of rezoning is a requirement of this rezoning.
That would be something you'd have to be aware of as a commissioner or council member at the time to make that a stipulation of the particular approval?
Exactly. And if you don't, if you just say, hey, this is, you know, what you're showing me is great. I think high-density zoning is great here, and you just allow the zoning designation without tying them, then they can do whatever the zoning code says for that designation.
That's a better way to do it, actually, than to try to draft for it, I think. A question on density. Are you aware, for example, a particular property with a particular density might look very different once it's built from another exact same-size property due to topography, usable area. You might have 100-acre rezoning, but only 50 acres is buildable, so it's going to look a little more, you know, like Tijuana when it's done than something that's 80, you know, 85 or 90 acres of the 100. Is that captured kind of in other areas of the code, like with minimum lot sizes, minimum setbacks, all that sort of thing, as opposed to having to write to some concept of buildable acreage to designate density?
In your current code, the way that is dealt with is through these density designations. So, for example, if you have R1L zoning with a density designation of five, and you've got 10 acres, then you can have, you know, let's, 50 units or whatever it is, and you can cluster those on your property, but you can't split up your property. It has to be one lot that meets the lots, you have to, well, you might be able to split your property into, if you've got 50 acres, since you have a 10-acre limitation, you could presumably split it into five, but in other words, you can't have a separate lot for each of those units. So, as a practical matter, because of the way your density designations work, you could do some clustering on your property, but you don't, your code does not have what some communities call a cluster option. So, there are a lot of places that, and this is a very controversial thing, by the way, because of what you just said in your introduction, a cluster product, when you look at it, is a significantly different-looking product than a traditional product. And when I say a cluster product, this means, so for example, if you've got zoning that allows you to have, let's say you've got rezoning on 10 acres that allows you to have 10 units, and you're in a community that has a cluster option, maybe that 10 acres is mostly a mountain, and the only buildable area is a flat corner. Cluster option would allow you to put basically 10 townhouses on that flat corner, and that's still consistent with the overall density permitted, and yet, if people around there have traditional one-acre zoning, single-family residences on one-acre zoning, they look across the street, they say, oh, my God, this, the town allowed high-density development here. It's clustered development, but, and it's not technically high-density because you take into account the clustered area. But your code does not have that right now, except for the density designation.
Into that much detail or that much calculation on the cluster factor?
I'm sorry, sir.
Are you aware of any other town codes that do do that in a more precise way, taking the topography and the clustering of a particular lot into account when they approve a density, or no?
Yes. So, in fact, I worked for two of those. One is Pima County. For the first 10 years of being a land use lawyer, Pima County loves clustering, so they've allowed clustering for 50 years, and they simply do a mathematical calculation to allow the number of units, which is why, when you go down to Pima County, you will see some remarkably high densities in areas with relatively low-density zoning. On the other hand, Marana, the town, I was the town attorney for 17 years, they hated clustering, and anything that looked like clustering was attacked. And so, I came from a place that liked it, and then I went to this other place, and they hated it. So, they, you know.
Okay, one last short question, though, not risk being hit in the head with something. One of my own pet peeves is the whole issue of owned housing on leased land. I personally think it's right up there with predatory lending. That notwithstanding, is that something that can be addressed in a town code, or is that not really subject matter for a zoning situation?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Evans, traditionally, zoning looks at land use, not land ownership. There is a lot of interest in this. It's funny you should, you know, I just gave a presentation at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns, and I was approached afterwards by council members who said that exact thing, said, our big problem is not being able to force developers to provide sellable product. They come in, they get entitled, and then they build a built-to-rent unit, and we're seeing these everywhere.
Not even necessarily built-to-rent. It's usually modular manufactured homes where you buy the home, but you lease the land from the developer.
Oh, I see.
Which, I've done the math, and it's not a very, anyway, I won't get into that, but is, so that's really what I was talking about. I don't know if that's a matter for a town code or something else.
I've not figured out a way to do that, but I've been sort of tasked with looking at that by somebody else, so you'll get the benefit of my research on that when I get to it.
I can give you mine too, if you want.
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, sir. You take up so much time. Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cassidy, thank you again for your hard work and wanting to make this chapter a great zoning code. I applaud you in answering all my questions. We went through a lot. We discussed a few conflicts of some verbiage, some clarifications that need to be done, so again, thank you. One of my items of concern was using the word landscaping, open space, common area, and you did say that that is a topic that deserves further discussion, so thank you for doing that. On our page where we talk about current direction or pivot, under Home of My Own option, thank you to the town for at least bringing that forward and making it available. I do not agree that we should be looking at income levels in 30% and 120%. The county does not do that, and I don't think that that should be in our basket of tricks to even look at. If somebody wants to come in and get a Home of My Own plan from the town, kudos, we applaud you. Now, you have to find a lot. So, I would like to not involve that income at all.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. I'm confused on what you're speaking, there's a, there's an income requirement?
If you're, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor and Chair Griffiths, no, actually, if you're using a Home of My Own program, plan, then that qualifies. It's just that in looking at, and here's the provision for you, so you can be looking at it, in thinking about, well, what would happen if somebody said, yeah, yeah, I really do want to put a stick-built house on one of the mobile home lots, or manufactured housing lots, but I don't, I don't really like Yabapai County's plans, but I've got a plan of my own, then I was thinking, well, how do you respond to that? And my response to that was make them, in that case, show you that it's affordable. But if they're using the Home of My Own, it's assumed to be affordable. So, that's the way this works. So, on this, it said affordable homes means any of the following. A, a site-built home from one of the Yabapai County Home of My Own. So, that's done. If you're using one of those, it qualifies. It is by definition what we call affordable. But if you're not using that, I felt like it would be difficult to just reject outright somebody doing some other site-built home. So, I said, well, then, we would like you to show that it is affordable if you're using the alternative. So, it's really the alternative that's affordable, where you have to prove up affordability.
I just, I just feel if, say, for example, someone wanted to come in and buy half of K V Circle and decided to put, or stick-built structures on that street, that would only benefit the entire unit, and I don't think you would want to hold that against someone because of what their income is. I think it would be beneficial for all the residents.
I agree, and income shouldn't even be a point of consideration.
The home would, a stick-built would be an improvement to many areas of Prescott Valley. It's just my thought.
So, that was my concern. Could we go back to your slide where you talked about smaller lot zoning? Maybe I misunderstood. Please, for Cassidy.
Oops, sorry. There it is. That's the slide.
So, could we have a potential problem with folks saying that we are increasing density by doing this because we know that the word density is troublesome nowadays?
The, Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair, you have very little actual existing zoned, small designations. I mean, we, I had Ernest Ruby do a study of this for me, and I actually have a table of it. I didn't, I don't have it queued up to show it to you, but there's very little land that has existing zoning that has a density designation below 10 that's not already built on. So, almost entirely, this would be a going-forward approach. In other words, somebody would ask you for RL6 zoning, for example, and then it would come through the zoning process, and you would decide whether to give it. So, while it's true that by, if you were to adopt my alternate table, if somebody did happen to have R1L zoning with a density designation of five, for example, today, and if it happened to be vacant land, they would be able to immediately build 5,000, on 5,000-square-foot lots. But let's see how different that is. Even under the current code, if they have 10,000 square feet with an R1L designation of five, they can put a duplex on it today. So, the only difference would be, in the entitlement, is they could now sell, under the revised table, they could sell two lots of single-family homes on 5,000-square-foot lots, whereas today, they'd have to put one duplex on a 10,000-square-foot lot. So, it's not, it really isn't a density change in that sense. It's simply the ability to sell, it has separate lots. And just for context, 4,000, I mean, my daughter has a home on a 4,000-square-foot lot in Pima County, so they're not unusual.
Can you address, because we do have that in all of our master plan communities, so maybe differentiate between the existing, the older part of Prescott Valley versus what all of the developers, Granville, all of them have lots that are less than 10,000 square feet?
Yes, sure, because they all have PADs. Every place where you have a PAD, one of the reasons they did the PAD was to get the smaller lot. And in those areas, the lots are already smaller than 10,000 square feet. It's just in places where you don't have a PAD and they're using the existing zoning code. A lot of your places right now in town that have smaller lots, lots smaller than 10,000 square feet, that have traditional zoning, are actually legal non-conforming lots. In other words, they were created before the zoning code came into being.
When do you feel that we'll be able to move forward with another draft with some of our other changes in it? What is your timeline for adoption, Mr. Cassidy?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Chair, members, some of this is up to your feedback, but also how quickly we can grind through some of this. I want to thank you and Vice Mayor Hunt for your specific comments and going line by line through this, and I apologize for not responding until just shortly before this meeting to your specific comments. But what we've done is, I have literally a list of the feedback that I've gotten since I sent out this draft, so we need to go through that whole thing and make sure we've tried to address the feedback that we've received. I think we could probably be back, you know, late this year or early next year. I would like to bring back, at the same time, Chapter 14 for a couple of reasons. One is, there is some interplay between the two, but also, I pulled out of Chapter 13 lot splits. There was an article on lot splits, and I plopped that in to Chapter 14, so now subdivisions and lot splits. So, it makes sense to bring those both to you together. And it's kind of up to you whether you would want to have another study session like this with another version, and with the Chapter 14, we could probably do that within a couple of months if you wanted to do another joint meeting. So, it's sort of, it's kind of up to your feedback to a large extent, but also, as reality, you know, it does take some time to turn these things around. So, it's not a very specific answer, I'm sorry, but...
Counsel? Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Frank, for all of your work on this and your attention to details and your patience with us when it comes to explaining all of this. I know you've gone over it and over it many times over the last year, couple of years, and kind of beating it, beating it into us and trying to get us to understand exactly what you had in mind. And so, I was curious about the legislation that is going to be required with reference to commercial properties that are not being used, that are being considered specifically for residential use. Is that being implemented in this at all?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Dickinson, no, it's not. That state law, which is the, they have a funny name for it. It's adaptive reuse is what they call that statute, or that law from this year. It doesn't apply actually to your size town. It's not a mandate. It does say that on, for larger cities and towns, it requires them to allow commercial properties that are underperforming either financially or are, you know, in somewhat disuse, to be adaptively reused either for multifamily or for commercial development. It has a mandatory 10% affordability component to it, so 10% of the units would have to be used for affordable housing. Even though it's not mandated for you, we could put something like that in here. I have not done that, but I'm certainly familiar with that statute and how it works, so I'd be willing to do that for you if you'd like. be willing to do that for you if you'd like. The way the statute reads, it says, no more than 10% of the existing buildings in a community would be eligible for this. And so, what happens is you basically determine, as a council upfront, well, how many buildings up to 10% would we want to open up, if you will, for this adaptive reuse? And then, staff would, each time they get an application, they keep track of how many that is, and once you meet the limit, the program stops. So we can do something like that if you have a lot of underused commercial that you'd like to open up for multifamily or what they call adaptive reuse. Yes?
I don't know that we have an abundance of that type of a property in this town, but it would be rather interesting to see what we would have available for that kind of a use and be ahead of the game. You know, we tend to be as a council. That would be something to maybe consider and look at as an option. My feelings are along the same order as what the mayor had mentioned, as far as a home of my own, as far as the lots go, and what Chair Griffiths has mentioned, that if this is a consideration and something that someone wants to look into, that they look, that they find their own lot, that the town does not set aside or provide acreage for this type of a development. Yeah. And as far as the ADU exclusion from the code right now, I can see that that is going to, at some point, become a major issue. And whether we address it now, or whether we, you know, put it aside and discuss it later on down the road, it will become something that we will have to consider and look at for our town. And also, the overlay that you were talking about, the infill incentive overlay zone, I think that, I would be curious to know what the objections were. You said that the staff didn't necessarily, they had a few objections to this, and I find it rather intriguing.
There were three basic objections. Number one is, there was no tie to any affordability. So it was designed, really, as a mixed-use type of activity zone product, much like, you know, in Tucson and Phoenix, along the rail lines, they're trying to get more mixed-use, higher-density activity in those areas, and that's where in Tucson, they placed this infill incentive. So that was the first thing. The second was, objection was, a concern about existing infrastructure being able to support that kind of higher-density mixed use. Of course, we hadn't placed it in any particular location yet. We were just, created a floating zone in the zoning code. But nevertheless, it's true that when you tried to imagine where you would plop this on the ground, wherever you plopped it, you know, the staff was thinking, well, even in the best locations that you might think, we have some infrastructure questions about. Then the third objection was compatibility with surrounding uses. So somebody next to it, all of a sudden, you'd have this overlay that somebody implemented, they decided to go for it and put a mixed-use development. Well, if you're an existing property owner nearby, it can have impacts on you that, and staff was concerned about those impacts. So they were not excited about my suggested...
But what you're referring to, then, is a permanent overlay rather than a temporary, one that provides opportunity to have a vision, rather than one that, what you're saying is that they're concerned about infilling with projects and development that would not fit in that particular area, or that residential area, or wherever. But what I'm curious about is an overlay that would give you an idea, or give you a vision of what is possible, you know, the possibility of these things. I mean, is that, am I off track here?
No, you can, you could do something along those lines. If you have a clear vision of what you, if you have like a picture of what it is you'd love to have in a particular area, yes, you could create an overlay that allows that. You can even place a time limit on that, as long as the time limit is in place when you adopt it. In other words, so that a property owner knows they only have 10 years to decide whether to do this, and then the rate goes away. If you don't have the time limit placed up front, and then you try to take away the rate later, somebody's going to make a 207 claim, a property value diminution claim against you. But yes, there are ways that you could do that, but you'd have to have a pretty clear vision of what you're hoping for.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor?
Thanks again to you, Frank. I know you answered a lot of my questions as well. Do we have, like, a restriction on people not using, like, shipping containers or sheds and trying to convert them into an ADU? Because I know that that would not necessarily meet building code. I mean, a lot of people are saying, well, okay, we could do this to a shed, but it's not going to have the foundation and other things that we're going to need in order to make sure that it's a safe structure. So that's, one of my concerns, is that it could get taken out of perspective for some people, but they need to meet snow load for the roof, they still need to have all the other requirements, just like as if it was a stick-frame-built home, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schumacher, yes, you're right. All of the requirement, the building code requirements would apply to the ADU. That being said, there are places where people have used shipping containers and have converted them, meeting the current building codes, and you see them, you know, on the internet in places. So there is some fear that a person might be able to actually use that as a building product and meet the building code. And unfortunately, the way the legislation is written, it, you know, it doesn't really allow you to mandate a particular development type, or a construction type here. So, anyway, so here's the legislation. I just happen to have it here, just in case you ask me a specific question about it. But in any event, so yeah, it does have to meet all the snow load requirements of stick-built housing, though. Yes, you're correct.
And so this could be like a tiny house structure being put in, or like mother-in-law quarters, they could call that part of the ADU. I know you were talking about if they have the large enough lot, in some places, they have an attached unit and/or a separate unit, and possibly a third unit. That kind of makes me just kind of worry about stuff and getting it carried away. So the minimum is 400 square feet? Is that what I was understanding, too?
No, I don't, the state law simply says that the maximum is 1,000 square feet or 75% of the size of the main home, whichever is smaller. They don't really have a minimum size on state law, so, but, the minimum really has been 400 square feet. That's, as a practical matter, that has been the minimum.
And then is there, I heard a statement that was saying that they would not, would ban them from having a kitchen at one point on something that's too small? Was I misunderstanding that? Because then I wonder if we have a definition of what a kitchen is? Because, you know, it used to be in the older days that a stove oven determined whether or not it was a kitchen, but you could still have a mini-fridge, you could still have a microwave, you know, you could have a little sink and call it a non-kitchen sink, you know? So I didn't know if that was still something that is a requirement, because you're still going to have heat factors within a small space for multiple living areas, and, you know, you have to start taking safety into consideration at that point, too.
Right. Under the state definition of ADU, you can have a kitchen or not have a kitchen. The thing I was responding to earlier, though, was, your current code allows you to have a guest house, and a guest house, however, cannot have a kitchen. Kitchen typically is defined as having, you know, cooking facilities. Now, if you put, I suppose if you bring out a burner and nobody knows about it, then I suppose you could say you don't have a kitchen. But, in any event, no, I think the whole point is, do you have cooking facilities there? And if you do, that's considered a kitchen.
In the college days, when you got away with a hot pot and all that kind of stuff. So I was just having that kind of a thought process. So, thank you so much. We really appreciate everything you've done.
Counselor?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Thank you, Frank Cassidy. Thank you so much for all this hard work. So just for clarification, when was the last time this code was updated?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Leva, it's regularly updated. Actually, the most recent change was done by Attorney John Palladini when you had the issue about community residences. So that change just happened, for example, in January. So even though this rewrite process has been going on now for a couple of years, updates have still happened, and you'll continue to have updates as we move forward.
But the whole point is to make it, like, to bring in more options and clarifications and efficiency on the process of the permits and stuff like that, right?
Yes, yes.
Good, good. So I really like the Home of My Own option. I think that's going to be really great for our town. And again, talking about efficiency, I think that the process is going to be a great option for people that are looking for something easy and affordable. And then, the ADU, I think that's also a great option for a mother-in-law suite or something, you know, guest house. I think I'd like that one as well. I really want to just say thank you for all your hard work, and I know there's so many things that could potentially get into this chapter, because it's pretty, you know, zoning is very complex, but I think we're making great progress. So I think that's all I have to say at this point. Yep.
Thank you.
Commissars, on the end, anything?
I just have one question, and I hope I'm not out of line by asking. When the Plan and Zoning Commission approves new zoning for a piece of property for a specific project, and the town council approves it, is, do other cities and towns, do they put a time restriction on when that piece of property needs to be developed for that particular area? Or is that stepping into a whole legal problem? It seems like sometimes we have what might be a great project, and we approve it, and then, for whatever reason, financing, whatever it could be, and now, today, that type of a project isn't realistic. So, but we still have that new zoning. Do other cities and towns, do they specifically put time restrictions on that?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Rankin, state law expressly allows you to place a time restriction on development as part of a rezoning. It does allow it. However, it does not allow automatic reversion. So in other words, it says, it allows you to say, this needs to be done within five years, and if it's not done within five years, we can take the zoning away. The procedure by state law is that if you put a time limit like that in, it has to come back through a public process for the council to say, "Yeah, you know what? You've had enough time. I'm yanking your zoning." So yes, you can, you expressly can do that. I've been at communities that do it routinely, and I've been at communities that routinely decline to do it. So it just depends on the business preference of the community.
I'm not necessarily promoting it. I'm just, I just wondered, because we've got property that's sitting for different reasons, and didn't know if we could make that change. So that's really up to council and staff.
Right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Vice Mayor?
So, I just kind of wanted to clarify what Mr. Evans said. So, I think I heard him say, are there some things that we just can't review? But even permitted uses, many permitted uses still have a site plan review and conditions put on.
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, you can certainly place a condition of rezoning when a property is getting its zoning entitlement, when they're asking for the rezoning.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay.
I'm talking about permitted uses in the zone still sometimes come in with a site plan review to staff.
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah. So it's not like they can just do anything and we don't look at the signs or the elevations and what have you. Okay, good.
Yes, but, but to be clear, that site plan requirement that's in the code, which applies to most development, it doesn't apply to individual, single-family residents, for example, but for any commercial development, that's what we in the business call a ministerial review. In other words, it's a review like checking out the book at the library. They just, the staff checks to make sure you're meeting all of those sign code, lighting code, and other requirements. It's not a discretionary review. They don't say at the end of the process, "Okay, you met all this stuff, but that is the ugliest building I've ever seen, so I'm going to turn you down." No.
No, but they can work with them to make the building look better.
They could try.
Right.
But if it meets the objective requirements of the code, the property owner's going to be permitted to have that site plan approved. It's not a discretionary process.
Because I have to say, I hate the black-and-white building for dispensary cannabis that's going in. It looks awful. So. Then my second question, I think Mr. Evans asked, was, he talked about cluster. We don't have cluster, and I'm good with that, but we do have transfer density, where you can, you can kind of cluster the homes and have more open space in the project.
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, depending on, I mean, you, yes, you can do that as long as you meet the overall density requirement of the current code. Now, whether you can get down to such a small product that it looks like a townhouse when you have single-family, large-lot zoning, I don't think you're going to accomplish that.
Got it. And then...
Mr. Mayor, could I add to that? Vice Mayor and Mayor, could you talk a little bit further? Because the council adopted in their recent strategic plan update, water and land conservation is part of that. We've begun the internal process of thinking about wildlife corridors and connectivity. So as an example, if you had a developer that had 100 acres and they had 2 rec as the, you know, zoning authorization, but let's say 50 of the acres really is the prime habitat for some species, how would we deal with that? How in the code could we make sure that we've got that open space and that connectivity piece built into that process?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Davidson, that's a common thing that's done throughout the state. Typically, what a developer will push for as part of the process of having these wildlife corridors, for example, set aside, is they'll push for higher density on the balance. So, let's say you start out with an entitlement of 100 units on 100 acres, and the government wants 50 acres set aside as wildlife habitat, that 100 units on the 50 acres, or whatever, is now going to be 125 units on that. So the net visual impact of density on the remaining property will inevitably go up as part of that negotiation. go up as part of that negotiation. But that's usually done through an entitlement process, through the rezoning process.
Have the ability to do that, it's probably PUDs. Okay, and then under number 16 on this sheet, you say, "Application Board Adjustment Must Now Be Filed Within a Reasonable Time Instead of 30 Days." So reasonable time could be 29 then, or do we need to put, I think we need to put like two weeks in there?
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, that was put in because state law basically says reasonable time. And the problem with 30 days is, the way these things go, the next, the person who would want to file the claim, or the appeal to the Board of Adjustment, might not even know about it in 30 days. So for example, let me give you an example of the way this plays out. If you ask the zoning administrator for an interpretation of the zoning code, right, because you want to do something on your property that you, as a property owner, believe you have the right to do, and the zoning administrator says, you know what, I agree with you, I think you can do that, and sends you a written decision on September the 1st, 2024, that, yes, I think you can do this. That decision is not put in the newspaper or something, it's not sent to everybody within 300 feet. The way people surrounding that property find out about the zoning administrator's interpretation is that they see equipment showing up on the property six months later, and they say, hey, what's going on here? They then go into the town and say, what is being built here? And they're told, oh, this is based on an interpretation back in September. If you have a 30-day limit, that person is not going to be able to appeal, even though reasonably, the first time they really knew about it was when they saw the construction happening. State law says it needs to be a reasonable time to file.
So that means more than 30 days?
Yes. Typically, it means more than 30 days. It means it might be two years after the opinion is, is given, because it might be two years before the construction actually happens, and the next-door neighbors find out that an interpretation was made that they don't like.
So the neighbors can appeal it when the construction equipment's out there?
Absolutely, yes, I'm afraid so. Now, the defense is going to be, I, I mean, I've been through this many times, the argument's going to be, well, you should have known about it prior, and they'll fight about it among themselves, but I would recommend that in the code, that you just say, it's got to be a reasonable time.
Got it.
And let the chips fall where they may.
I was taking it as a shorter amount of time.
No, it's not shorter, definitely.
You tell us, before we totally strike the 30% and the 120%, can you tell us why it's in there? I presume it's something that Stephanie may have asked for.
I'm sorry, what's, on what?
Percent and the 20, 120% in the Home of My Own.
Oh, no, no, that, she didn't ask me for that. I put that in there. That's just the federal guidelines for determining affordability, that's a common way of determining affordability. So I just borrowed that, Stephanie did not ask me for that.
Whether or not we have it in the code or not, it applies.
No, if, if I, basically following up on your feedback, I'll take it out as an affordability issue, and I'll just say, you can put stick-built, including Home of My Own on these lots.
Okay. Then I think mines should be a special use permit, along with the other three or four uses you mentioned.
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, right now, mines aren't even addressed, so it, we can certainly add that. There are some complicating factors, but we don't need to get into it here, but yes, I'll look, I'll add that to the list. In fact, I already did add it to the list, since you put that in your comments.
And then, I, I'm glad that we took it a step further for the 5,000, 6,000 lots, because we have, we have homes on lots in Prescott Valley that are pre-existing non-conforming now. And so I think that that's not a good thing. So I think we really need to look at those smaller square footages. And so thank you for saying that. And then I think my final one is, I have a question on what was changed for number 25, but you can follow up with me later on the feather flags, because I couldn't find it in the, I couldn't find it in the code.
Mr. Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, it's in the temporary signage table. So if you look at the temporary signage table, we've added the flags with limitations, and that's based on feedback from staff, that people are putting these up. Anyway, let's create rules for them, so...
Good, I'll look at that then, thank you for telling me where it was, because some of them are up for years and they look awful. Okay, good. And then my final comment is, I still have an issue with the factory-built discussion. I think that, you know, we want these units in Prescott Valley because they're more affordable, up to 30% less than a stick-built home, and they have, you know, you can still get loans on them, they, you know, they're 60 years, as opposed to 70 years of stick-built, so I think we want these homes, but it seems like we're still missing the mark on this definition. So I don't know, you have the HUD part in the mobile home section, but it's not in the factory-built section. And could it be that some of these factory-built units are HUD-approved?
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, what differentiates a manufactured home from a factory-built home is, a manufactured home is built to the HUD standards, so it's not two-by-four walls, is a simple way to think about it, whereas a, a factory-built building is built to a state-adopted building code, but it's basically the normal standard construction, but it's built in a factory. The factory-built homes are permitted in the stick-built areas.
Right.
Whereas manufactured housing is not. We're being approached by manufactured housing industry to say, why don't you open this up and allow manufactured housing everywhere? There are places, there are states and local communities that do allow manufactured housing everywhere. So for example, in California, there are requirements that they look like more traditional housing, but they, in California, as long as you meet those design restrictions, you can actually have manufactured housing, in other words, HUD-standard housing.
Right.
In stick-built locations. We've not done that in this code. In this code, we've still differentiated out manufactured housing, built to HUD standards, as opposed to stick-built and factory-built. So factory-built is on the stick-built side.
So my concern is that we just approved Southwest Homes, a huge, you know, showroom lot, and that they aren't going to be able to put their homes on many of the lots in Prescott Valley. So I still want this section looked at.
First, I'd like to apologize for being late, that happens with day jobs sometimes. My question really has to do back to the ADUs, and I understand that, you know, it's excluded, and I wasn't privy to a number of the meetings that occurred in '23 because I wasn't here at the time, but in reading through HB 2720 and our zoning code, I had, came across what I found, a couple difficulties, or maybe things I'm just not finding. Since the, the state law would allow up to two ADUs on a single lot of an acre or more, I could not find a restriction for a minimum. So in a planned area development, a community such as Quailwood or Granville, if I could meet the minimum setback requirement of five feet, say, I could stick that on a 6,000-square-foot lot, up to 1,000 square feet, am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, number one, state law cannot overrule covenants, local covenants. So planned communities pretty much universally have covenants that are going to prohibit...
Prohibit that.
ADUs.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
So, so in all likelihood, when you mention the name of a community, I'm immediately assuming that it's got covenants that are going to prohibit it. But if there aren't covenants prohibiting it, and if you're in a community that has 75,000 population or more, then after the beginning of next year, January 1st, 2025, yes, you're going to, you're going to be subject to a five-foot rear and side yard setback, as long as you meet that, then you can have up to 1,000 square feet, or 75% of the size of the main house, whichever is smaller. So it wouldn't be larger than 1,000 square feet, but it might need to be smaller, depending on the size of the, the main house.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Commissioner.
If, if they survive the BNC qualifiers in your Home of My Own section, I think the math, as applied the way it's written, would have the opposite consequence to what you think you're drafting for, but rather than tie up everybody's time, if you've got two minutes after adjournment, I'd be happy to, maybe I'm wrong, but I'll just point it out and see where we go. Thank you very much.
And with that being said, I believe everyone has your contact information, so if they leave here, and they think of something, maybe in the next few days, we encourage everyone to reach out to, to you, sir, and figure out some clarification.
Thank you.
With that being said, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.